Artists, everybody. The meeting will come to order. The time is now 5:34 PM on Monday, April 24th, 2023. This is a regular monthly meeting of the District of Columbia Commission on Arts Humanities. My name is Reggie Van Lee, Chairperson of the Commission. I am wearing a black sweater and a brown-ish jacket today. I'll now call the roll. When you hear your name, please answer present. Stacy Lee Banks.
Present.
Cormas Berry. Maggie Fitzpatrick.
Present.
Quanise Floyd. Natalie Hopkinson.
Present.
Kimber Minkity. Mariah Rooney. Oh, good. Thank you, Kimber. Mariah Rooney. Carla Sims. Carla Sims?
Present.
Good. Hector Torres, Gretchen Wharton.
Present.
And myself. Good. The forum is present. This is a meeting of the public body held in open session in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. Notice of the meeting was posted on the DC Register, on the Commission's website, at dcarts.dc.gov, and on the DC Office of Open Government Central Meetings Calendar. The meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format. A number of us are at the Commission's office building in Washington DC at 200 I Street Southeast, and a few are joined remotely using the Cisco Webex Virtual Meeting Platform. The meeting is being livestreamed to the Commission's YouTube channel. An electronic recording of the meeting will be available for viewing online following the conclusion of the meeting. I will now read the Land Acknowledgement. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will. Some were drawn to leave their distant homes in hope of a better life, and some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. We begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We stand on the ancestral lands of the Nkatchtang and the Pescatari people. We pay respects to the elders past and present. Please take a moment to consider the many legacies of violence, displacement, migration, and settlement that bring us together here today, and please join us in uncovering such truths at any and all public events and to use such truths to guide the legacy of the Arts Commission. Is there any objection to the agenda that was previously circulated? Hearing no objection, the agenda stands as adopted. I'm going to start with a few comments that we'll get into of the full meeting. As you know, the agency had its budget oversight hearing before the committee on the whole on March 30th, and we thought it went fairly well. You also know that the annual budget process is just that, a process. You may have heard about changes to our enabling legislation or reallocations within our funding categories. It's part of the process, and it happens every year for every agency across the government. But nothing is official until the council votes, the mayor signs, and Congress has its review. At the end of the day, this agency is about equity, so we can work with any scenario as long as it can be done equitably. As we say in the Land Acknowledgement earlier, we want the legacy of this agency to be guided by truth. And one of those truths was that at various points in the past, there was a great deal of inequity and unfairness. We recognize that truth, and we are guided by it so that it is not repeated again. I just want to start with those comments. And now we will go to our first presentation and our monthly grantee highlight. Please join me in welcoming Doris Worrell and Maria- Mariah Laras from Streetsense Media, which is one of our projects, events, and festivals grant recipients for FY23. Welcome.
Hello. Thank you.
Maria, I'm Doris Worrell. I'm the Director of Development and Communications at Streetsense Media. Maria is our Manager of Artistic Workshops, and she's going to give you an overview of the photography grant and project that we're currently running.
First of all, thank you for this opportunity. We have been enjoying this. It has been a magnificent progress in the artistic technique of the artists. Some of the people, the students that we have been working with at the beginning of this workshop, they didn't even know how to use a camera. And sharing this process with them has been really beautiful. We have been going around Franklin Park, the White House, and also Chinatown. And sometimes we went to the National Portrait Gallery. We also allowed the artists, the students, to take the camera in their free times. In there, you can see some of the pictures that we took during the workshop. The way that we decided what artists are the ones that we are going to put in the book are the artists that were more interested in the photography workshop. Through the session, they have always been curious, and they were asking how to improve. In addition, each of them came with different interests. For example, it was really beautiful to see how some of them wanted to show us nature. Some of them wanted to show us architecture or just to see the things that they want to share us during day by day. During the class, we had, we discussed things that go beyond a workshop. We talk about things that were in life to life and how they see life, things that are, for some people, not so important. But what's your favorite type of ice cream? What's your favorite day? And it was really beautiful to see them grow day by day. In there, we can see some of the pictures. It says by Lori, so she took Miss Queenie just taking the sun in the park. And we can see how they are enjoying the time of the workshop. And in there, we have a group picture by Gigi, one of the artists. There is the one of, one day that we went out to Franklin Park. And you can see just the excitement that they were happy to be out in a group. The next picture, it's from Missy Bull. She took a picture of his boyfriend, Daniel Bull, that he went with us to the park that day. And just to look there and through their eyes, for me, it's very beautiful. Like, at the beginning, we could see pictures that were blurry. And at the end, we can see that they have a meaning. And for me, that is very beautiful. Now I will pass it over to you, Doris.
Well, thank you. And you can go ahead and continue to move through the photographs from our participants. So we had about 28 participants in the workshop overall, and these are from among our artist vendors, and we have about 130 of them. All of these individuals are either currently unhoused, recently housed, or facing some version of housing insecurity in their past. And so this is part of project and really the forward thinking that Streetsense Media has is, you know, everyone here has their voice. All of our vendors have their point of view. We don't need to instill it. We don't need to sharpen it, but it does need amplified in our current community. And that's what we have been doing with this project, giving folks the opportunity to amplify. And then we're going to be doing the book launch on June 22nd, Thursday, June 22nd, down at Dacha in Navy Yards, a fun place. All of our artists will be there. We're expecting about 120, 125 people. Of course, y'all will get notice through the Commission about what's going on. And then from there, we're looking to take the exhibit to some libraries, some businesses in the downtown area, places where it can get more exposure, and eventually make the photos available to varying degrees on our website for more long-term use and exposure for the artist and the program. So that's the program that we're running. Folks are very excited about it, and we look forward to seeing y'all, if you can make it to the book launch later in the summer. And we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Well, thank you for your work. I'm especially impressed with the whole notion of amplification of the artists and amplification of the arts. And that aligns very closely with my whole comment on equity at the beginning of the meeting. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
No, thank you.
You're most welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Joy Ford Austin, speaking on the behalf of Traditional Arts DC at Howard University. The background, beginning in FY22, the National Endowment for the Arts introduced a new requirement for all state arts agencies to implement a traditional or folk arts program in their state or jurisdiction. Any idea to use this program to highlight Gogo? I'm sorry, an idea to use this program to highlight Gogo was proposed by staff, which led to exploring a partnership with Howard University for traditional arts program. And Joy will now provide us with some updates. Joy?
Good evening. I want to acknowledge that Dean Dana Williams has been on the Zoom call with us, and she is one of the co-directors of Traditional Arts DC. So it's wonderful to have her. So Chairman Van Lee and Commissioner Wharton, Commissioners, staff. Let me start by congratulating my good friend, Aaron Myers. We have spent many a DC budget season advocating for the arts and humanities. And I will say, Aaron, very successfully.
That's right. Keep it up.
I know how much you care. I know what brilliant ideas you have and how well you represent artists across the city. And I wish you the very best.
Thank you.
So I'm Joy Ford Austin. I'm President of Joy Ford Austin Arts and Humanities Advocacy, providing various services to arts and humanities organizations here and nationwide. For 20 years, I was Executive Director of Humanities DC, the local affiliate of the National Endowment for the Humanities, and a partner with the DC Commission on the Arts and Humanities. And for this presentation, I'll probably continue to refer to the Commission, since it was always for me, "the" Commission. I've worked with hundreds of artists and arts and humanities organizations across the city, promoting, supporting, preserving traditional arts. I've also been there for the stories of loss and fear and longing for stable support. That is why Don't Mute DC is a rallying cry for all who care about preserving and celebrating the traditional arts in the city. That is why, Mr. Chairman, I commend the recent efforts of the Commission to provide equitable funding for arts and arts organizations across the city. I know the history, and so we're grateful. So when Dr. Natalie Hopkinson asked me to think with her and Howard University, the Commission, NEA, and creatives and scholars who care about the traditional arts in the city, about a plan to do three things. Increase public appreciation of DC traditional arts, create a safe space for traditional arts in the reality of gentrification, and provide support for traditional artists to create, preserve, and share their work. I was there. I wanted to be a part of it, and the draft prospectus is the result. So before providing a few details of the prospectus, I want to make two points. One is I wanted to respond to Commissioner Wharton's fundamental question, which she raised a couple of weeks ago with us. And that question is, what are the traditional arts? It's a good question. So folk life or traditional arts, broadly speaking, are expressions of everyday life, the art of the people. Whereas dominant Western arts patronage streams flow from the top down, folk life flows up from the grassroots, and it centers on the word "folk." And there are a couple of concepts that we can use to frame this. People in place and community and city. That's where traditional arts get their genesis. I want to remind you guys, and I'm glad that NEA started this endeavor, that NEA itself went for many, many years without paying any attention to the folk arts of rural and small-town America. And eventually, they caught up, as we are doing. And one further thing is that the National Folk Life Network is a unique network, I know you're a part of that, that will focus on folk life and traditional arts in urban communities, which is, you know, a really interesting and important aspect of the work now. So here in DC, traditional arts are the arts of the people who have made DC home. They may have been here 6,000 years and continue to be here still. They may have sought freedom here in Washington DC in the early 19th century. They may have come as enslaved people with the technical and artistic skills to build a capital. They may have been early 20th century migrants from the South or immigrants from across the world. But they all brought their arts, their culture, and their values about preserving, performing, adapting, and passing them on. So those, then, are the traditional arts. And I submit that they can help us explore our identity as a capital city and a city of neighborhoods. I want to mention one strategic design that we have in the entire perspective, and that is about two pages of a research agenda that looks at some of the cultures that I've just talked about and many, many more. Washington DC has a rich traditional arts basis, and we have to do the research to make sure that it's uplifted and, Mr. Chairman, amplified and regenerated as well. So I want to also assure you that we're not, these ideas are not just coming out of our heads. We've had a head start on building TADC. Between 2019 and 2023, we've accomplished much. Then Director Cliff Murphy at NEA first initiated the idea of doing a DC folk life pilot in partnership with Howard University and the Smithsonian Center for Folk Life and Cultural Heritage, which he now leads. Howard University has raised more than $230,000 in grant funds towards the pilot. In collaboration with former CAH Executive Director Heran Sarek Abirhan, Howard University's Department of Communication, Culture, and Media Studies, and community partners such as the Gogo Museum, Don't Mute DC, the Kennedy Center, DC Public Libraries have all made a significant part, are all a significant part of this head start. Let me just mention a few of the accomplishments over the three years, four years. Pioneering work to document, present, and preserve Gogo, including collaborating with the City University of New York and producing more than 30 oral histories. Now how is the DCPL and Howard's Morland Spengard Center? And we will continue to maintain a relationship with Gogo artists, especially around the Annual Preservation Week events. An ongoing mapping project with the Smithsonian Center for Folk Life and Cultural Heritage, and other important partnerships are being developed now. The 2020 Gogo Awards, which were only streamed, engaged more than 100,000 unique visitors, identified hundreds of DC creatives, and inducted several honorees into the Gogo Hall of Fame. Howard is particularly interested in developing a digital humanities institute as part of the Traditional Arts DC Center. And in addition, TADC has communicated in collaboration with Humanities DC and Brink Media in a program called Communicating Across Cultures. And of course, many of you will remember Don't Mute DC's Culture Caucus at the Kennedy Center, which produced four festivals from 2021 to 2022 at the Reach. Let me turn a little bit to some of the highlights in the prospectus. First, I want to tell you who the leadership are. The co-directors of TADC include Dr. Benjamin Talton, who is the Director of Howard University's Morland Spengard Research Center. Dr. Talton directs the Morland Spengard Research Center, which has the preservation of Black cultures at the heart of its mission. He's trained as a historian, and he understands preservation as a practice of history. And Dr. Dana Williams, who is with us, Professor of, Dean of the Howard University Graduate School, Professor of African-American Literature, and committed to preserving the history of literary and cultural arts institutions, including the Institute for Arts and Humanities at Howard. She has led and continues to lead national humanities organizations and has earned a national reputation as a humanities scholar. We propose a panel of professional and community leaders, including CAH staff and other representatives, artists, folklorists, scholars and arts practitioners who will volunteer to lead the center and align its mission, vision, and values. And we will have a small but mighty executive, research and communications, and program teams who will also work as part of TADC. So very quickly, the mission is to preserve, protect, and mobilize the traditional arts form, cultural and heritage of Washington DC. The vision is a vibrant and equitable cultural landscape in DC that fully embraces the city's diversity of cultures. And we practice values that are a commitment to history and culture, a commitment to community voices and connection. After all, that is how we got our start. Accomptability, we understand the importance of trust and generativity, because there is nothing more important, other than the preservation of traditional arts, but the transference to future generations. Another plus for the good reason to be at Howard University. So the strategy is cultivating homegrown arts, brokering values for traditional arts. And again, Howard plays an important part because they offer so many assets, including classes and certificate programs, mentors. And then we hope to put aside $300,000 a year for artists to continue to do their work. We've talked about redefining traditional arts and folk life through the research agenda and then expanding arts and tourism infrastructure. I, for one, really want this, and I'm hoping that as you guys think about the next step here, you'll realize that traditional arts can be a powerful, a powerful aspect of tourism infrastructure. It really can. I've sat in a lot of meetings over the years where we talked about getting tourists off the mall. And, you know, we've done a good job of getting tourists who live near us. You know, our friends from Maryland and Virginia come, and I think they do a good job of getting into the neighborhoods. But we can do better, and I think the traditional arts can be an impetus for that. So I hope that that happens. So highlights from the action plan. Solidifying the Commission-Howard University partnership. Hiring a project manager to help with startups. Securing space at Howard. Hiring core staff, consultants, and undergraduate and graduate fellows who will decide on the programmatic agenda. And very important, initiating a strong, sturdy community engagement process and then launching operational and programmatic teams. And then, the good news, hopefully even by the end of 2024, formally opening the Traditional Arts DC Center. And then we'll continue and expand programs. Those programs include archival research, oral histories, travel research, conferences, grants to individual artists, research into tourism opportunities, social media and communication strategies that will support these activities. And I promise that there is also a section on a strong evaluation. So what will it cost? I know that's what you really want to know. So the cost is pegged to the NEA's Folk and Traditional Arts Program, which is 2.7% of the NEA budget. And so what we are proposing is 2.75 of the Commission's budget, which my understanding is that for next year, this year or next year, could be, this would mean about 1.5 million, just a little above 1.5 million, for the Traditional Arts DC Center. I wanted to be sure to mention to you that Dean Williams is negotiating with Howard University financial administrators regarding Howard University's willingness to reduce its GNA, which is usually 45% of contracts and grants, to 25%. And, you know, they'll be providing a lot of, you know, a lot of financial facilitation and facilities and many other, you know, many other gifts and assets to us. So that's a big commitment on the part of the university, because they too have to have income to run. Expenses are fixed from the Commission for the next five years. So that's it. That's what we propose. I would like to tell you that I think the time is now. The partnership between Howard University and the Commission is historic. A government agency that has examined itself and made commitments to an equitable distribution of resources and an institution where thought around freedom and inclusion, Black culture, and philosophies of equal opportunity has been and continues to be nurtured and organized. This is a partnership made in heaven, and I believe that the Traditional Arts LSC program truly is. So it's an unprecedented opportunity. Please ask me questions.
Well, I mean, first, thank you for such a fulsome description of what Traditional Arts DC is, both what it is, what you have accomplished, and what your vision is going forward. And we certainly want to be a part of a partnership with you on that. I cannot commit to the money at this point, and as you may have heard, our budget is under pressure, so we've got to sort through things. But this certainly aligns with what we are trying to do here. So we will work with you as best we can to make it happen.
Thank you.
So thank you. Thank you. Questions? We have no public comments, I'm told, which is surprising, refreshing. And so instead, we will go to our long-awaited acting for the moment, Executive Director report from Ann Myers.
Thank you very much, and thank you, everybody, for being here on today. To start off, if possible, if I can grab this from, you take this one for me. I'd like to start by taking a moment to recognize two individuals that made sure the agency continued to function as effectively as possible during this recent leadership transition. First, it would be to Deputy Director David Markin for his service as interim Executive Director from August 2022 until earlier this month. If we can give him a round of applause, please. And Attorney Advisor Robin Carr McClure for her service as interim General Counsel from March 2022 until March 2023. Although Robin could not be with us today, she is aware of this recognition. Let's please also give her a round of applause if she may be listening. To echo Chairman Van Lee, the annual budget process has a lot of moving parts to it. The draft legislation for the FY 2024 Budget Support Act submitted by the mayor to the council includes a dedicated revenue adjustment subtitle, and CAH is included in this subtitle. Several other agencies are included in the subtitle as well. At our budget oversight hearing on March 30th, several of our grantees expressed their opposition to this subtitle. And on Thursday of this week, the Committee of the Whole will mark up the BSA, at which point we'll see what changes the council might propose. Let me also say that I agree 100% that the heart of this agency will be equity, at least if I'm gracious enough to be here. I would like to ensure that that would be happening. Over the years, we've watched as the surface parking lots here in Navy Yard disappear. One... one by one, as new buildings are constructed in their place. And anyone who's driven down here lately will understand that problem. That fate appears sealed for two of the last remaining lots, directly in front of our building on 200 I Street Southeast, which recently discontinued operations. A number of our staff rely on those lots as part of their daily commute to the office. So in an effort to hopefully relieve some pressures, the agency is now in a temporary three-day telework, two-day in-office split. Previously, it was two days telework and three days office split. This temporary measure will be evaluated in coming months, in the coming months. For the first time in recent memory, and perhaps ever, we have provided bonus checks to the staff. The staff can now clap.
I should say, we have a reception after this for you, but I'm sure that check was a little sweeter than any food or beverage we provide you, so thank you.
They have performed admirably under the pressure of the pandemic and leadership transitions. And their work is deeply appreciated. And I would also like to say to those who are watching, if you would just be mindful that the pandemic did happen to those who work in the agency as well. And so I know we've not all had an opportunity to take a collective breath and acknowledge what we've been through together. But I hope in this moment, we will take some time to reflect. And just all for one minute, if you wouldn't mind just indulging me for those people who have been really most impacted during this time, during this moment. Would you, if you don't mind, for a moment? Thank you. With that being said, we intend for bonuses to be given annually going forward, as it is the practice in other independent agencies. One of my chief priorities currently is provide for the wellness of the staff through physical, social, and emotional health. The department heads are currently conceptualizing ideas for wellness plans. And we will be involving the staff on the development of these plans as well. In your notes, you will see the current and upcoming requests for applications. And also our F Y 21 to F Y 23 Strategic Plan focus. These are also in your binders for your reference. If there are any questions, I am open to them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions, comments, especially from the commissioners who are...
Yeah, just a quick question, Erin. You alluded to the pushback on the budget. What specifically were you talking about there? Is it from large arts organizations?
Well, most of our allies saw the subtitle in the legislation, and they were alarmed and really wanted to understand with that cap, the ability for our agency to offer support to them. And when the agency, when the budget does go to the council, oftentimes throughout the markup process, some of these concerns are taken into consideration. So we know several of our stakeholders did email council members regarding their concerns regarding the cap that was in the subtitle.
And perhaps you should explain, because not everybody may know what the cap was. And please, experts correct me if I get it wrong. But the proposition, the legislation that's proposed coming from the mayor
Yes.
is that instead of the 5% of the taxpayers' money that we normally get each year, it will be sales tax, right? It will be capped to be the lower of the 5% or 102% of what we got before. So a 2% increase is the max, and it may be less.
Right. And the concern, because we've lived in some uncertain times, is we make projections and we cannot always predict the future. And we do not want to be in scenario where the sales tax has been considerably less than what we projected and then be left with that as set in stone. So our advocates have gone to council members and as well to the mayor's office to convey their disapproval and their concern with what has been said so far. And we too share the concern. Yes, ma'am?
Who are the advocates?
Some of the advocates have come from Sitar Center. During our budget hearing, all of those, Gala Hispanic Theater, they were some, they also spoke out against. I'm not aware of everybody who wrote in, but I am aware of those who did testify during our budget hearing, who spoke out against it.
But it's safe to assume that the sales tax, because of the economic condition for the city, is declining.
Yes. We did have, in our meeting we had the other day, we did look at some of the, I would say, what the receipts, that outside of the projections, the cash that was received. And there seems to be some trends around months that are booming or the months that are slumping. February is one of them. We did see a significant slowdown in February of this past year by over $1 million, unfortunately. Now, that is not an indicator of what the rest of the year may look like. We are not positive just yet. However, it would behoove, I would think, the council and others to take into great consideration about what they're doing here. We, none of us here in December of 2019 could have predicted what would have happened just a few months later. So I think it would be good to have legislation that really did protect our budget at all, at all cost. And that's what we would encourage, of course.
And what's most troubling for me is they're saying the lower of the 5% or the 2% increase, right? And one could argue that, okay, if you can get 2%, that's at least a growth, there's not a decline. But we know our demand and need is so much bigger every year. So some of the great plans we have to expand and be more inclusive and to fund people that have never been funded before, et cetera, et cetera, would be thwarted if indeed that legislation goes through. So our funders are a little bit up in arms of it, and we certainly understand the economics of the city at the moment. So we don't want to seem like we're or deaf mutes around the whole thing, right? But the reality is, we don't want legislation to constrain us unnecessarily. So that's sort of where we are and know that we're advocating in the appropriate ways around this.
And in the next few days, when the budget is circulated for consideration, we will be first alerting the Commission as to what that language specifically is and if there are any issues that we need to really raise at that hour before the council members go in to make their final votes. We can do so then, and we will be able to give you all the data that you would need in that moment.
What's the timeframe, Thursday? Is there...
The vote, they will circulate it on Wednesday, and there should be a vote on Thursday.
That's what I thought.
But we won't know any language until Wednesday.
Right.
So with that good news to start us off.
Yes.
And I thank you. And we'll go to the finance report. Kimber and Ryan.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Wonderful. Well, I just, again, welcome Director Erin. We are excited to have you here. And we had a chance to have our very first finance committee meeting last week with Erin present. And so excited to just share some updates. I think we have some slides that are certainly in handouts, not that they're going to get shown up on the screen. There they come, there they come. So I'll jump in and feel free to fill in anything that I missed. So we're start, we can move on to probably starting at slide. There we go. The Budget Balance Report. This just sort of highlights, right, overall, the current budget for fiscal year 2023, which we know is right just over the 45 million. And we continue to fulfill our commitment to artists and arts organizations by allocating 81% or over 37 million in the grants section of our budget. So 81% of the budget being able to have that direct impact to artists and arts organizations. We go to the next slide. You can look at it sort of broken down by cohort. So this looks at what we've issued, right? So we've issued payments totaling over 17 million for a total of 782 payments processed to date. I know that was a question when we were together last time. Invoices for the remaining funds will be processed as they are approved from the grants team with the required interim reports. So we've, we had some challenges, I think, were resolved so that we can get payments out to all of our grantees. We've recently awarded 123 Fab Relief Grants and are set to issue purchase orders as those agreements are executed. So to date, we have authorized to issue 1,023 grants. So a significant number of grants that have already been authorized. And the next slide kind of looks at it just as a recap by program. So this is the final slide that just provides a summary of all the executed grants to date. And yeah, if you're getting any questions on the status of payments that have not been received, please connect with your grants management specialist directly. Brian, anything that you want to add?
There's a question.
Yeah. Okay.
Just to piggyback on what you were saying, Kimber, where are we on the outstanding monies that were owed to our grantees because of the glitch in the system?
So I'll answer that question, Kimber. Initially, the original amount was 900 grants that were outstanding. And as Kimber just reported, 782 of them, grantees have, payments have been distributed for them. We're still in the process of receiving invoices. There may be some instances where grantees may have submitted an invoice and had some difficulty. What we're doing, again, as Kimber asked, is ask the grantee to reach out to us, or we're being proactive later next week, or sorry, this week, we'll do a grant portfolio reconciliation, where my team will provide the grants management team any areas where there may have been some delays.
So we'll know which ones are outstanding at that point. So we'll know which ones are outstanding at that point.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks.
And this is obvious, but our clear approach to this now is less of responding to a grantee and talking about where are you in the purchase order process and has, blah, 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 all of that stuff. Have they gotten their money, right? And so we're focused on everything we can do to get that money. Now, in some cases, we work with other agencies that we don't have control. But that over which we have control, we're working mightily to get it done for our grantees. No excuses.
Yes.
Anything else in finance?
Nope. No, I'm good. So shout out to Brian, he's working hard, and I appreciate it. And he keeps us updated to make sure we have the information we need. So appreciate that. Thank you, Brian.
We say thank you, that being me, myself, Melissa Leonard, and we say thank you as well.
A small but mighty team.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Other questions about finance, commissioners?
I would say, one thing I would say, and to those who are watching, we had over 1,400 grants that have been issued last year, this last year. And they were processed, at least the payments were processed by only two people. And so we are working in the next budget cycle to add to that team. So we have more people to support that so that we can reach more people in a timely fashion. Especially if there are any problems, we'll have a better opportunity to get some relief and support to them.
Thank you. Public Art Committee, Maggie.
Yes, thank you. Lauren will help me with this as well. We are tonight voting on the F Y 23 Commemorative Works Technical Assistance Program. This is a collaborative design and place-making grant, new initiative created through the partnership with the D C Office of Planning. And the initiative provides technical assistance to under-resourced communities and organizations for participation in the D C Commemorative Works Program. The T A P is a two-year program that will, over time, include one project for all eight wards, but we're starting in the inaugural wards of four, five, seven, and eight. I won't go through further details unless there are questions. You guys did receive this in your packet. But what we're proposing is 120,000 for up to four artists. Anything else, Lauren, that you'd like to add about this particular grant?
No. I think that we are proposing $120,000 for four artists to work on the Collaborative Design Team, one per ward. And this is a new opportunity. Usually, it's the project's done and public art, where do you fit in? But at this point, public art will be part of designing the Commemorative Work Council. We're excited.
I don't understand. What do you mean, design commemorative work?
Pardon me? I'm sorry.
Explain. I don't know what that means, design commemorative work.
Okay, so there's a program called the D C Commemorative Works Committee. And how they define commemorative work as any form of significance, place, or event that has historical significance is considered a commemorative work. And it must go through the Commemorative Works Committee for review and approval. The idea is to get the works out of the monumental core and out into the neighborhoods. And again, it focuses on our, that interest of taking people out of downtown and into the neighborhoods. And we're going to be working with community organizations in each one of the wards who are going to be getting community input from the residents, the neighborhoods. What is the topic, the person, subject that could be commemorated? And then working with the design team, a professional architect, and the four artists that have been identified to design a project that would be submitted to the Commemorative Works Committee.
Okay, so when you say design team, that's the community. And it can be any genre? I mean, it could be a mural or statue or, I mean...
Yes. And so that's part of what the community partners are going to be conducting a series of public meetings in their neighborhoods to find out what it is the community wants to see in available public space. And what do they want to see commemorated? Who do they want to see commemorated? And then how do they want that to look?
So how do you, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was just...
How do you generate that interest? How do people find out about it? How can they be a part of it?
I think it's important, though, isn't it focused on the cultural heritage of Black Washingtonians?
Yes. And people of color.
Well, that's important information. But I still get back to, how do they know about it so they could have a part of it? Be a part of it?
Through the Office of Planning's grant-making process, they've identified four Main Street organizations in each one of the wards. And those Main Street organizations, with the support of O P, are setting up a series of community input sessions. And those will begin sometime over the next month or so. And so that's how they're going to, those community organizations that already have relationships within those wards, that's how they're going to be inviting people and communicating to the public to participate.
I'm asking these questions, one from our perspective, but also to make sure that we're going beyond what has always been defined as those organizations. So how do you break through to make sure that you're reaching all the way in?
Reaching down very deep.
Well, I'm not saying down, but all the way.
Right, right. So that's part of what those organizations who are, have a grant agreement with Office of Planning will be working on, developing those lists and working with their community residents through all kinds of outreach, traditional outreach, flyers. You know, and everybody gets their information on the internet through email. So they will be posting flyers, things on bus stops, just any way to get to various community representatives and folks who might be interested.
Okay, so I'm asking this for another reason. There's another project that's been around lately. People want to do something similar. We'll talk about it later, but it does that same thing on a much grander scale. And so, I mean, capturing the history of the city through neighborhoods is, I mean, I think is way overdue concept. But again, can you give me an example of an organization in any one of these wards that would be your primary organization?
So the four organizations that O P has engaged and they're in, under contract with O P through grant agreements is the Upper Georgia Avenue, Main Street, the Ward Seven Business Partnership, the Parks Main Street, and Destination Congress Heights. Those are the four Main Streets organizations that they have reached out to and they're working on.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So resolved that the Commission adopted the funding recommendation for F Y 2023 Commemorative Work Technical Assistance Program Grant as presented for a total funding amount of up to 125,000.
120, there was a typo in the report.
So 120. All in favor?
Well, I have to go through the...
Okay.
So we'll take the vote. If you're in favor, a, if you're against, nay. Stacy?
Yay, aye.
Cora?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Vanise?
Yes.
Oh, good. Natalie?
Yes.
Kimber? Mariah? Carla?
Yes.
Hector? Gretchen?
Yes.
It passes. Thank you. Congratulations. There we go. Good. Anything else in public art?
Nothing for me. Anything for you, Lauren?
Good. We have two pieces of other business. One is our, well, both are our regular monthly updates on where we're in two particular areas. First is the C H Foundation update. Jeff?
So we reached out to the National Assembly of State Arts Agencies to see if we could get some information on best practices of other states or agencies that have done foundations. foundations themselves. They got back to us. There's been a lot of them created over the years, but a lot don't currently exist anymore. There've been a few reasons for this. A lot have been ephemeral, just being, being created and being active for a short period of time, then going dormant. In some cases, the states didn't promote these foundations very much because of perceived fundraising competition with their own grantees sort of thing. So there's currently ten state arts agencies that have associated cultural trusts and foundations. Some of the work that they do is assisting the work of the agency, providing a vehicle for flexible programming in support of the agencies, like special initiatives, projects that require fast action or work across multiple years, which we've discussed in this context before. They also provide a mechanism for handling functions that state cannot spend funds on, such as receptions. And some do, do some grant making of their own, usually very limited, usually with bequest dollars, so not, you know, the state money itself. They identified, NASA identified three of these foundations that have demonstrated some staying power of the time. South Carolina Arts Foundation, the Alaska Arts and Cultural Foundation, and Texas Cultural Trust. We've reached out to the executive directors of these organizations just to get some more information from them as far as what it is that works and what's different. Each one of these has, does different sorts of activities. South Carolina is a programming partner. They set up a relief fund for artists during COVID. Alaska runs a few small grant programs and some of their award activities. The Texas Cultural Trust is mainly focused on promoting the arts within the state and has some programs like it's Texas's Young Masters Program and the Medal of Fine Arts Program that they, they run. So each one of these has, really variations in the focus of it. And then Maine, as an example of one that just started, Maine Incorporated Arts Engage Me, the abbreviation for Sabine. In 2016, it just received its nonprofit status in 2018. So in terms of, you know, what we're thinking time-wise, trying to do it as quickly as possible, it took them two years for incorporation to get the nonprofit designation from the IRS. So things to consider.
So, so there are at least three big milestones I think we have to cover before we do this. The first is for us to define what it is for us. And so I'm curious of where we are in that process. The second is for us to get the approvals, because the mayor's office and the city council and other approvals we need. And the third is to get the 501(c)(3) designation.
Right.
So from a timeline standpoint, do we have a sense of where we're at those three and when we'll reach that final destination? As best we can. Crystal Ballit?
Oh, Crystal Ballit? Well, I think we have, you know, we have a rough sort of idea about what the function of the, of the foundation would be based on, you know, what we've been working towards with this, the art summit, the Art Basel concept, to build off of that. As far as getting the, you know, Chairman Mendelson indicated that would require legislation that could be worked into a part of the BSA or could be a standalone act. So that could be, you know, upcoming this summer, you know, we would think. But as far as then, you know, moving into the 501(c)(3)'s part, that's probably going to be a little bit later on than we initially thought, because we were trying to shoot for us fall, get all this kind of wrapped up. It might take longer than that, I think.
So it sounds like it's going to be 2024 before we could really.
Probably. Especially if it's because it's not just, you know, we have to, I, I would assume that we wouldn't incorporate until we get the permission, and then you have, then you have to file for taxes. So that one step is the two steps.
If there's any good news out of that, the connection between the foundation and what we want to do with this Art Basel idea, we haven't named it yet, so we put our hands in there and we talked about it, is that the launch that we're thinking about is 2025. So if we can get the foundation in place in 2024, we'll be okay. But we don't want it to slip much further than that. So I'm going to task you and David Martinez with getting us through all those steps, ideally into the middle of 2024 at the latest. But questions, comments? Do the staff know about this whole foundation idea? Does it make sense? Have you shaken their heads no? So should you talk a little bit more about what it's intended to do? Why we want it in place?
It's, it's an idea that predates history in some ways, I think, because once upon a time, the commission, you know, we couldn't, we couldn't pay panelists, we had difficulty getting through panelists. And so one idea that some other agencies had done was you have a nonprofit that does this and takes care of it. We recently, the payment issue got resolved legislatively, we have the right to do that now. But as far as, you know, being able to pursue, you know, special projects or things that might, you know, need to move faster than government can move, you know, if there was a special event or an initiative that, that we wanted to focus on. And so that's kind of how this came back into conversation, thinking about a new arts event. And, you know, government is always, not always the best events producer. So a nonprofit might be better suited to do something like that and that we could work with. And, you know, and also as a means of, you know, opening up and being more equitable with our activities, because we have our restrictions on, you know, what types of organizations we make grants to in the CERA, whereas a nonprofit may not be able to, may not have those same restrictions and may be able to reach communities or parts of communities that we haven't been able to reach before. So that's kind of been the impetus behind the thinking for all.
So the foundation can raise money that an arts commission can't from sources, as they wish, can distribute the money in the way they want. And in particular, I think you mentioned it, to the extent there are small organizations that don't have the wherewithal to create a 501(c)(3), we could be the fiscal sponsor for them, and they could get 501(c), they could get tax deductible contributions that would come through us, right? So this is really helping some of the smaller organizations. Right now, we can't fund you unless you're a 501(c)(3). And sometimes the only difference is you don't have the capacity or the money to go through the process to pay the fees to be a 501(c)(3). So there are a lot of advantages to it. And as we talked about this Art Basel thing that Carla Sims will talk about next, the foundation can raise money for that, that the commission can't. And there are some of our constituents who are concerned, who we talked about Art Basel. It was going to take money from them and money that could go to them. And the foundation allows us to deal with that issue. It doesn't have to take money. Now, the commission should play a part in it, but as far as funding that concept, the foundation could do that in a way that we can't. So there's a lot of advantages to the foundation. And it's interesting, we're trying to do them in concert so that by the time one thing is ready, the other thing is in place as well. So that gives you a better sense of what the thing is about. Good.
Reggie, can I add a question? Comment and a question? So, I mean, I've seen the DCPL, their, the Public Library, their foundation works really well, like they're able to do things through their foundations. I think that's a good model.
Yep.
And also the National Park Service, you know, they also have, they have a foundation, they, they're making, they're raising funds of money and able to do some really innovative stuff through, by having a foundation. So I guess my question for you, Jeff, is, I mean, my understanding was not, it doesn't, it's not like it used to be, it doesn't take two years to get 501(c)(3) anymore. So it's, you know, it's, it's a lot shorter now. So do, do you have a sense of how long it took the library to get theirs and what their process was?
So my understanding, because we talked to the library foundation recently, to think their brands, you know, they were established quite a while back. And for a period of time, they were kind of ingrained within the library itself. And just recently, the last few years, they separated it out, their own executive director from, of course, separate operation. But I don't think, when we talked to them, they gave a sense of what their timeline of from award incorporation to nonprofit status. But they did have legislation and the statutes that provides for their, you know, allows the library to partner with a nonprofit specifically for that purpose. So that's one piece that we're after as well.
Yeah, and I would say another thing just around the timeline. I mean, I know the National Park Service is doing a lot, like they're doing a lot of big, big planning for 2026 for the, what do you call it?
Two hundred and fifty. Whatever it is.
Yes.
But there's a lot of ambition.
Yes. I can tell it.
Yeah.
Saying your podcast, right?
So there's a lot of planning around that that could end up, you know, I think there's going to be a lot of energy, you know, around DC, like from national people. And so, you know, making sure that DC, you know, that this foundation's in place and the Art Basel thing is in place, it could all work out next.
Exactly.
You know?
I, I am less concerned about the 501(c)(3) because I know how to do that.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think that, I am more concerned about us being clear about what is this?
Yes.
And then getting the approvals through the mayor, the city council, et cetera. So I want to make sure we put a lot of energy on that piece of the challenge. We have relationships on the commission to help us with that. But so let's not just accept the way the last person did it. You know, we may be able to do it differently, so.
Right.
But I'm really excited about it.
Just a comment for the staff. CAH is not going away. The foundation doesn't replace CAH. So don't think because there's a foundation coming around or that won't happen, we're all going to be working together on it.
Yeah, no.
We do get, we understand.
It's in addition to.
Just want to make sure, because there are a lot of people here that didn't even know about foundation.
Right. And it's, the foundation would be a completely separate entity.
Right.
Organization, you know.
Exactly.
Yes, I'll thank you.
So I didn't want to belabor it, but I, I knew that there are different levels of understanding of what it is. And so I want to take a few minutes so we all understand what it is and can shape what it is. We haven't defined it specifically yet. So points of views that you have on it, we want to make sure we hear them.
Yeah.
Because to me, you're all of the experts in this space, not us, or not me. Maybe Maggie, but not me. You have a question?
No, I'm good.
Good.
Thank you.
Anything else on the foundation? Carla, thank you, Jeff. Carla, let's talk about this thing that has not been named yet. You may be muted, we don't hear you yet.
Thank you. Thank you, Patrick. Getting those slides up. So as you know, we've been talking about art, we've been talking about DC's version of Art Basel. And so I wanted to take a few minutes to give you an update on where we are. And there's some weird noise. Where we are and what we, what, what is coming up next. So over the last couple of weeks, representatives from the commission met with representatives from Art Basel, which included the director of, oh, wow, the director of fairs and exhibition platforms, as well as the global head of VP, of VP Relations, Irene Kim. We also met with Chrissy Whitfield with the disadvantaged, small and disadvantaged business development and.
Carla, I want them to know that Vincenzo and Irene are the very top of Art Basel. So you talk to people, the very top of Art Basel. These are not just some lower level people. So that conversation is real and suggests something real will happen. Just wanted to.
Thank you. We also, we've started to kind of redefine or refine a little bit more of what this is going to, or what we want to present to our stakeholders at our upcoming meeting, just kind of trying to flesh out what it is a little bit. And one of the things that we've done is we've described this as just a week of art in DC. And we haven't branded it yet. We want to make all the community members and the stakeholders a part of that process, but the basic description is a week of art in DC. And as a part of that, our Art All Night, which is the program that we've been running for, Gretchen, how many years?
Thirteen.
About thirteen years.
Thirteen years, that's what I thought. So we have decided that one of the things we definitely want to do is make sure that we are in multiple locations around the city in addition to what our Art All Night does, and that we represent numerous, if not all, the art disciplines that, that want to participate. We will be having a stakeholders meeting on May the nineteenth, and so far, we've sent out over two hundred invitations and surveys to a cross-section of art organizations and stakeholders regarding the meeting, to invite them to the meetings. As Reggie may have mentioned earlier, this is for an event that would launch in 2025, but during the next two years, we want to use Art All Night as an, as an opportunity to test some concepts and to just introduce this kind of larger week of art in DC. You can, go ahead. This is a, this is basically what we shared in the invitation. We asked people to join the arts, the Commission on the Arts and Humanities for the first in a series of meetings, where we're going to work to create a shared vision and strategy for this week of art in DC. And we want to leverage the power of the arts to touch every resident of the district so it becomes a destination. This week-long event would honor a range of artistic genres, as I mentioned, including visual, theatrical, performing, music, culinary, fashion, digital, and more. So when you think of what it actually is, we would say Art Basel times South by Southwest by the Edinburgh Festival, Fringe Festival, and the Food and Wine Festival. This envisioned week of Art All Night, or this envisioned week of art would be inclusive of our annual Art All Night and would feature, which features seven hundred activations, engaging more than a hundred and eighty thousand residents and visitors showcasing art from every genre and in two hundred and seventy-five venues throughout all eight wards. One of the ways I like to describe it is that we're kind of creating this larger platform or banner under which artists and organizations can permit, present, and promote their work while focusing and amplifying DC talent. This will have a huge economic, cultural, and social impact while kind of elevating DC's profile on the, on the national art stage. Over the next few months, we'll arrange a number of community gatherings. This is the content from the, from the letter that went out. And so the first meeting will take place on the nineteenth. The invitations were extended in phases, and we need to do that because we want to have meetings that are, we want to have meetings that we can actually have lively debate and conversation. So we're, while two hundred plus invitations went out, the first meeting will be about sixty people. And then we'll have subsequent meetings with the additional invitees. We will have a special meeting for individual artists as well. And so we'll do these large and small group conversations and use that as a way to just really refine and develop the strategy for, for this week of art in DC. I don't, are there any questions?
I know it's a lot.
I'm sorry. Patrick, that's, I had updated the slides, so you can, you can stop the slides. Thank you.
Questions, comments, so far, suggestions, reactions?
I think it's great. I think it's an absolutely fabulous thing. I don't know how many of you've had a chance to go to Art Basel or South by Southwest or any of these types of events, but it brings out a whole world of people. It's, it's the neighborhoods, it's the downtown areas, and this is what we really want to see happen here in DC. And I just think it's something that we can all get excited about. And just to tie everything together, that's, the foundation's going to be our process for trying to do this.
For the comments? Thank you, Carla and Jerel and Melvin and Lauren, who are all part of this, this process.
Yes.
And David and Jeff and Camille.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. My agenda says we have no new business. The one bit that I will observe is, and I hope I don't jinx this, but so far, technology has worked splendidly to date. Thank you for that.
That's what I'm telling you.
It makes a huge difference. Any other topics for discussion? There'll be no further business. The next meeting of the commission will be held Monday, May twenty-second, 2023, at 5:30 PM. The time is now 6:43, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.